Okay, Brianna, that is recording, so feel free to start when you'd like.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to GBOS March 21st, 2022 regular meeting at 7:05. Rolling too fast. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct called Order at 7:06. I am Brianna Sullivan, Co-Chair, Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Supervisor. We'll do continued roll call. Mike?
I'm Mike Hedgeson, Co-Chair and Land Use Supervisor.
Thank you. Amanda?
Amanda Sassy, Roads and Utility Supervisor.
Jennifer?
Jennifer Wingard, Public Safety Supervisor.
And Guy?
Guy Wade, Fire Department Supervisor.
Thank you. Are there any disclosures tonight?
Yes, I have one disclosure on item number seven, Alaska Employee Housing. My spouse is currently employed by Alaska Resort.
Okay, thank you, Mike. I do not think that poses a conflict for you to participate in the discussion and voting.
I have a similar disclosure that my spouse is also employed by Alaska Resort.
Thank you, Amanda. And in our small town, that is common to have these coincidences with a very large resort in Girdwood. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Go ahead with agenda revisions and approval. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved, Mike.
We have a second?
Guy, wait seconds.
Okay, thank you. And February 21st? Oh, sorry. Did I hear something else? Okay, February 21st, meeting minutes?
So moved.
And second?
I'll second. This is Jennifer.
Thank you. And another meeting minutes from February 28th, 2022?
I'll move that again.
Thank you, Mike.
February 28th minutes.
February 28th. And second?
I'll second again.
Thank you. And lastly, March 16th, 2022, our work session regarding the HLV work plan.
I'll move that as well to be consistent.
Great.
Second?
Seconded by Guy. Thank you. Announcements. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. The Girdwood Health Clinic is working on the design and permitting of a slightly larger Phase Two of the new clinic, following the recent Assembly Action amending Title 21 to allow a larger health services building in the GC7 district. The project team is hosting a standalone virtual community meeting Monday, next Monday, March 28th at 6:00 PM on the clinic edition via Zoom. There are three ways to log in, included right here on the agenda, through calling in, or the link. And next on the agenda, introductions, presentations, and reports. Number one, we have AWU presentation by David Persinger, Sandy Baker. Welcome to one or two of you tonight to our meeting.
Thank you so much. I'm Sandy Baker. I'm the Public Outreach Coordinator for the Anchorage Water and Waste Water Utility. And again, we appreciate you giving us some time tonight to talk about what we have going on in Girdwood. Mr. Persinger is going to do most of the presentation tonight. David Persinger is the Director for our division that handles operations and maintenance. On the line with us if we need is also Mario Kroos, and he is the Superintendent at our facilities there in Girdwood. And we also have John Reskover, who is a project manager in our engineering division that's going to be working on some of the projects we have going on there. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Minister Persinger, and he's got a presentation if he can share his screen.
Thank you, Sandy. I'm trying to get my presentation to come up, but I need to control the meeting, I guess, to share it.
Yeah, let me get you set up real quick there, Dave. Okay, you should be set. Sorry about that.
All right, can everybody see my presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you for the introduction, Sandy. Just a little background on myself. I've worked for the utility for about 15 years now. I worked in the Engineering Division for several years, did quite a few projects down in Girdwood. In late 2013, I moved over to the Treatment Division, where I ran the Treatment Division until early 2019, when I moved over to Operations and Maintenance. So I've got quite a bit of experience with the utility and background on all of the systems that we operate. I'm going to talk first about our fluoridation system. That's been kind of a hot topic recently with the board. I'll talk about our well project, some distribution upgrades that we're proposing, and then touch on some wastewater system upgrades that we have in the queue as well. So with regards to fluoride, we've had issues with the system down there. We've had it offline for quite a while now, intermittently at first, and then since August, it's been offline. Our communication was not good at all. We failed to communicate with the Board of Supervisors and with the community of Girdwood, and I'm here to apologize for that. It was oversight on our part and should not have happened. We have taken some steps with our public website, awu.biz, and we have under our water quality a fluoride link there that shows whether the systems are up or down, depending on whether there's unscheduled failure of a component, or we have to take them down for scheduled maintenance for calibration, things like that. Municipal Code is what requires us to add fluoride. This has been in place in the municipality since, I believe, the 1950s is when it was first started. It requires us to fluoridate not more than 1.3 parts per million. Everything has to be in accordance with the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation and in compliance with the National Primary Drinking Water Regulations. And the personnel who make the necessary analysis of fluoride have to be state-certified water treatment operators, which is a fundamental requirement for any public water system in Alaska. So the Girdwood well, well number two is one we primarily provide water to the community of Girdwood from. That has some naturally occurring fluoride. It's a fairly low level, varies from about 0.06 milligrams per liter, 0.2.
No, I don't think that's funny.
Back in the mid-2000s, the US Public Health Service recommended to reduce the concentration of fluoride in drinking water down to 0.7 milligrams per liter, and then the CDC followed suit with that. We're regulated by the EPA primarily under the Safe Drinking Water Act that was passed in 1975, and the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation has primacy over that regulation. So everything we do has to be in compliance with DEC's requirements, and then Municipal Code requires us to fluoridate. There's a lot of different tests that we have to do on the water routinely, but if we are adding fluoride, the only regulatory requirement for DEC on that is that we have to do routine testing on it. So a little bit of history on fluoridation in Girdwood. Back in 2003, we did an upgrade to the wellhouse, and in part of that upgrade, we put in a fluoridation system. We had some operational challenges with it. Girdwood is a quote-unquote "remote" system because it's not staffed 24/7 like so are other facilities. So we have operators in Girdwood every day, including weekends and holidays, but they're only there during business hours. And so at night, and at times when they're not there, the system's monitored all the time by our control room here in Anchorage via our supervisory control and data acquisition system, which is a very complex system that monitors all of our different facilities and has alarming. So if something goes out of the norm, dispatch somebody to go down there. We've also always had people on call to respond in case something happens at 2:00 in the morning. In the early 2010s timeframe, there were some staffing and equipment failures in Girdwood, and so we took the system offline for a time, and we made some changes, got the system back up and operating. And in 2015, we started fluoridating again. And at that time, we gave public notice. We received feedback from several folks in Girdwood, and we also did a presentation to the Board of Supervisors and let them know what our concern is. Currently, the system has been offline intermittently. That started in March of 2021, and then in August of 2021, the mechanical device which doses the fluoride into the water malfunctions. And we'd had some issues with some of the dosing equipment as well as the monitoring equipment. Again, fluoride is, according to scientists, it has a benefit at a certain dosage. However, at a high dosage, it's very bad, and it can be fatal. So we have to make sure these systems operate and they provide the dosage at the right amount. And so as we troubleshoot the system, and off the top of my head, I think there was 40-some work orders since 2020 trying to get everything working down there. And we had supply chain issues, delayed repairs. After getting everything back to the extensive calibration, we still couldn't get consistent dosing. As a result of that, again, going back to certified treatment plan operators, they're bound by their regulatory requirements to certified operators to make judgment calls and at all times to protect public health. So as a result of the issues we were having and our desire to make sure that public health is forefront, we made a decision to take the system offline until we could come up with a reliable solution that would allow us to consistently dose fluoride at the targeted 0.7 milligrams per liter. So solutions going forward, there's several things we're looking at, and I'll talk about the well upgrade project here in a few minutes. But we could potentially purchase a new system, a standalone system now. It'd probably take us upwards of six months with current supply chain issues, and we'd have to basically shoehorn it into our existing process. What we're proposing to do, and we want to get input from the board on this, is to upgrade the fluoride system as part of our well upgrade plans, which is slated for construction beginning and next year and completion the year after. The other alternative we could possibly look at is run the system with intermittent dosing. And if that's something the community is interested in, we could probably do that. There's challenges with that. We would probably have to set the system up so that it would underfluoridate, and so we wouldn't be getting that optimum 0.7 milligrams per liter, and we'd have to take it down if we ran into any issues with it. So the Girdwood well upgrade project. So for several years, we've noticed a couple of things. We've got two wells in Girdwood. We have well two, which is located here, and then well one, which is a little bit farther away from Glacier Creek. With some of the big storms we've had of recent, and some of the, I think it was a couple of years ago, we had a really hot summer, we noticed quite a bit of fluctuation in the level of well number two. And well number two is we primarily use to supply water. Well number one produces plenty of water, but it has a lot of manganese in it. And manganese leaves a kind of a black stain on clothes and dishes and things like that, and it also has some taste and odor. So we keep that one as kind of a backup. We can use that well. It does meet regulatory compliance, but it'll stay in the pool at Elyeska Black, for example. As part of our well project, we went to DEC because we'd seen these fluctuations in the well number two. And so we went through the analysis to determine whether it was under the influence of surface water. And groundwater tends to be more steady. There's not a lot of change in it. Surface water has a lot more treatment requirements because there's a lot of organics and pathogens, things like that. And so the level of treatment required for surface water is generally quite a bit higher than for groundwater. Went through the process with DEC, we determined that there's a high likelihood that well number two is under the direct influence of Glacier Creek. So as a result of that, we have to do further treatment on that in order to make sure that it meets compliance with the groundwater under the influence of surface water. So we are working going forward with that. However, Girdwood water supply is in compliance with state federal drinking water regulations. And when the groundwater under the direct influence of surface water is kind of a blanket regulation that covers the entire nation. So whether it's a well on the side of the Mississippi River, or if it's the well number two in Girdwood, which is close to Glacier Creek, Glacier Creek is a very pristine water source, especially as you get up that far, it's not too far from the glacier. And we also do a lot of testing on it. We also do weekly sampling for total coliform, and we've never had any indicators that there's anything in there. So again, it's more of a regulatory compliance thing and just making sure that we meet that treatment rule. There's also, the wellhouse's last upgrade was about a little over 20 years ago. Equipment's getting older. We're looking at ways to deal with the groundwater under the direct influence, whether it be further treatment, possibly even putting in another well that would get into an aquifer that doesn't have influence from surface water. One of the benefits of another well would be a more resilient system because we would have a larger geographic area where we're pulling water from. Project status, currently, we've completed a condition assessment and preliminary study, which included that going through the determination with DEC on the groundwater rule. And now we're in the process of procuring professional services and using construction management risk for design and construction. We'll also be doing more of our Girdwood INI project, and that project's been going on since 2005, and that's on our collection system. And as everyone knows, there's a lot of both groundwater and surface water around Girdwood. Drainage is sometimes a bit of a challenge. And so we have a lot of inflow and infiltration. Inflow is where water flows in, like through the pickholes in a manhole lid. Infiltration is where it comes in through cracks in manholes or cracks in the pipes. And we've systematically been going through the Girdwood system and fixing those holes, because what ends up happening is we get inundated with groundwater into our collection system that we have to treat at the wastewater plant. And so reducing the INI reduces the volume of water that we have to treat at the treatment plant. We're also slated to do some upgrades on our distribution system. We have these four facilities. We've got St. Morris Booster, Veil Booster, and Timberline Drive PRV, and these are all underground facilities except for St. Moritz, and they're small. They're fairly old, and they need to be upgraded. So what we're proposing to do is to try to combine all three of those stations into one station, and that'll be able to perform the functions of all three stations in one location. And less infrastructure we have to maintain, better service, and backup power. I know I think St. Moritz doesn't have backup power, so sometimes during power failures, those customers have low water pressure. And that's slated for construction in 2023 to 2025. And again, we wanted to come before you and talk about the fluoride issue. I know that there was possibly some interest by the board to take us to tour of the wastewater plant and the wellhouse, and we'd be more than happy to do that. Probably be best done after breakup, as the roads getting into, especially to the wellhouse, are usually a little bit of a challenge this time of year. And then going forward, we're going to do a better job of communicating, frankly. Kyle Kelly is the liaison in Girdwood. We talk to him fairly regularly, but it's imperative that we communicate any pertinent projects or changes in our operations that would affect the community. With that, I'll take some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Persinger, for the presentation and thorough explanation here. I'm echoing, but maybe that's somebody else's computer. I do appreciate the intro with apologies to the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, and the last slide with a commitment to the future of how you'd addressed changes. I'll start with asking the board for questions, and I'll call on them. Mike?
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to, first of all, just echo what Brianna said. I really do appreciate the thorough description of the current projects and what happened on the fluoride issue. We haven't really got very much information at all from AWU before now, so I do appreciate the completeness of that response. I do have one question on that, about how does the plans to bring fluoridation back online in sort of 2024, how does that tie in with the code requirements that you're meant to be fluoridating producing fluoride now? And then I have a couple of other follow-up questions on other topics.
Well, that's a challenging question. We are required by code to fluoridate the drinking water, but it has to be done in a safe manner that complies with, especially with our regulatory requirements for DEC and from the EPA.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, public safety is, that's what we do 24/7. Our main mission is to provide safe drinking water and fire protection, and those are at the forefront of our mind in everything we do.
So would it be a fair summary to say that you don't feel you can, that there isn't an obvious path for a consistent, safe provision until you do the reworking of the well project?
That would be an accurate statement, yes.
Okay, thank you. My other questions were about, I've heard in a number of discussions about future work that needs to be done at the wastewater plant, I think in terms of the quality of the outflow. I just wondered if you could say anything about that, or what sort of time scale that would be in. And my other question was generally, if you could just give some sense of how much investment is currently being put into the system, I'd appreciate that.
Sure, I could speak to the wastewater system. So we did Phase One of the treatment plant, I think about 10 years ago. It was a little bit longer than that. Time flies. We've been on an administrative extension on our permit down there since the mid-2000s. And I think it was in 2008 or 2009, DEC took over primacy of that permit from EPA, and it was administratively extended at that point. We have been performing studies and testing on the wastewater. We just actually wrapped up a two-year evaluation of that, and it's currently, the data's being reviewed by DEC and EPA, and so we can determine the permit requirements for the, what the permit requirements are going to be as we review that permit. And then as far as your other question on the investment, I'm going to actually ask John Reskover, he's our project manager on the Girdwood wells, the INI and the distribution project. So he could give us an order of magnitude capital investment on those three projects? John, I think you're muted. That's okay. Would it be possible we could provide that to Kyle, and he could provide that to the board here in the next couple of days? I don't know what the numbers are off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you. We would appreciate those numbers sent to Kyle and then to the board. Guy, go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate you coming down or talking to us about this. Everybody reads it in the news and wondering what's going on. So yeah, it's nice to hear what happened. So appreciate that. About the well development, for your new well, are you going to be the depths of those? And are you worried about getting in the same aquifer as well one and having the same manganese problems? And if so, can that be treated?
Well, yes. Yes, the answer is, yes, there are treatment methods for manganese. And if we were to drill a new well, we would have to, as part of that, developing that well would be taking water quality as we go down. Generally, with a well, when you're drilling wells, you can segregate the different aquifers as you go down, and then you can pull samples out of each one of those and get the water quality. So yeah, it is a big concern, and that's part of the reason why we need to go through the process of making sure that whatever we do is going to not get us back into the same challenge that we have with well two or the issues with well one. And it may not even be a new well. It may be advanced treatment. There's a myriad of ways to develop this, but we want to make sure that whatever we do is the right thing for the community and provides best quality of water within a reasonable cost.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did see John Reskover's hand up, and then I didn't see it again. But we have another question from Mike.
Yeah, it was on the water distribution plan of combining the three pumping facilities into one. Have you got an actual location for that yet? Because I haven't seen that in a plan anywhere yet. And I live adjacent, so it's just a selfish question, really.
No worries. I think it's on Veil Drive is where we're looking at.
Right. I wondered if there was an actual sort of plan which showed the precise location.
That is something we could provide as well. I think we're still in a fairly preliminary design phase of that, so I'd be happy to provide that or have our engineering folks provide that to Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
Amanda?
Thank you, Brianna, and thank you, Dan, for everything. I was just wanting to comment on the future of fluoridation system. I think that it sounds like it won't be probable that it'll be able to run functionally for a couple of years, and it sounds like it might be worth doing a public outreach so that people in Girdwood are well-informed as to the state of their water, if that could happen, whether it's social media or actual physical flyers around the community. That would be awesome.
Okay. Sandy Baker's our Public Outreach Coordinator. She's on it.
Thank you, Sandy.
And yes, I see another question from Jennifer.
Thanks, Brianna. I thought I heard you say that you had a couple of options about the fluoridation, that you could try a standalone system that would take about six months to get online, or run the system with intermittent dosing, or wait for this new system. Does that mean that those were options that were considered, but you've actually decided on doing the new system that's integrated and waiting until 2024 then for getting the fluoridation back online?
Yes, we've looked at those. We could potentially purchase a system that we may only use for a year or a year and a half until we build the new system. We need to get a little bit farther along on our design for what we're going to do as far as the well upgrade project. And currently, supply chain issues are a pretty big challenge. So six months is probably more like eight months to a year, just by the time something's designed. more like eight months to a year, just with, you know, by the time something's designed, you know, brought up and has to be installed. And we'd have to shoehorn it into our existing process. And then not knowing what our process is going to be with the new wellhouse, that system would probably only last for maybe a year or two, and then we'd have to replace it. The third option we looked at, which is something we could potentially do if the community is really interested in is to run the system with intermittent dosing. But again, that would we'd have to put a lot of safeguards in place to make sure that we didn't over fluoridate. And so we would, if we were to go down that path, it would likely mean we'd be under fluoridating most of the time because we would only be able to run the system during certain times when we had folks there.
Thank you, Mr. Persinger. Another question from Mike, and then we have one from the public.
I'll try and make this my last question for now. When the fluoride was removed for, I think, five hours in the ocloper plant, the statement was made that the system had enough kind of, I guess, inertia, for want of a better term, that it had no real impact on on the the water provided at the to to sort of residents. Is the same true of the Girdwood system? Or is it being, is it that because it's much smaller, if you were treating, if you were treating just during the day, it would have a significant effect overall, you know, that you'd effectively have a situation where there's no, there's nothing arriving at the forces during the night?
Yes.
If you understand my question.
Yeah, I do. I understand your question. Yeah, Anchorage is a much larger system with a lot, you know, many reservoirs. Girdwood has one reservoir. And the well, you know, pumps to the reservoir and then feeds out of there. I mean, there would still be residual fluoride in there for several days, just because our, our water reservoirs are operated basically with, you know, there's those limited band of the reservoir that's actually used for domestic. The majority of the water in the reservoir is there in case of a fire for fire protection. So it would probably have a greater impact to Girdwood than in the Anchorage system, just because it is smaller.
Thank you.
Amanda, I see your hand is up.
Thank you. I'll make it quick. Dan, I had, we've had a report recently of Girdwood resident who noticed rotten egg smell in their water. And you mentioned manganese has a smell. I looked it up. It sounds like it could be what they smell. And is there a danger in having manganese in the water? And how are we treating that?
My guess is probably not manganese because we haven't run well number one. We generally don't run that. Some of the things that can cause water quality is internal plumbing, or sometimes if the vent for the for your sink or whatever gets plugged, you'll get that smell. If you do have, if the resident does have a concern though, on our website, we have a location where you can report a water quality concern and one of our folks will contact them. And if need be, they'll come out and check water out for them.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Karen Zaccaro?
Hi, thanks. Definitely. Thank you for the presentation. I work with engineers and don't always find anyone so thorough and articulate. So thank you for all that information. I have a couple of comments and then maybe one question at least. Just opinion as far as the fluoridation. I'm not a fan of the intermittent in between system. It will be hard for parents, especially to understand how much fluoride is actually coming through. And one of the questions that you get asked at the pediatrician's office is, is your water fluoridated? And I'll say yes. So I don't even know what they say after that. But it is of a concern, especially to people with children, I would imagine. And so I would support the idea that we go ahead and make sure that we're talking to the community consistently about whether fluoride is on or off and when to expect it to be consistent again. So that's just my opinion. I actually love the idea of a secondary well, the redundancy. Sounds like something really important for the community overall. I don't think any of us wanted to see you using that well one unless it's some sort of emergency. And then I was going to echo the smell, but I heard somebody else talk about it. And then I smelled my water and I thought it smelled like chlorine. But I'll go to the website and report it if I think it's a real issue. And so my question was, the cost of the new well, is that borne by our service area or is that an area wide capital improvement project?
That would, it's, as where rates are currently structured is we have poster stamp rates for our entire system. So capital improvement projects are funded through our capital improvement program. And those are those are debt services and costs of that is borne by the entire rate base.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. I see John Reskaber's hand up again. Let's give you a try, Mr. Reskaber.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I can answer questions here now, or if you prefer to wait, I can also provide those to Kyle Kelly another day. I'll leave it up to you guys if you want to discuss that now or later.
Well, you have our attention now. We are over 30 minutes on this topic, but I think we'd like to probably hear since it was asked.
Okay, would you mind repeating some of those questions that was presented?
Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I think I asked two, which Dave suggested you could answer. One was, what's the current capital investment in the Girdwood system? Or the investment applied over the next couple of years? And the other thing was whether you had a specific site chosen for the for the Vale Pumping Site or Booster.
Okay. Hey, Mr. Persinger, would you mind scrolling up at least to the the project list slide? I think it was like number two or something like that. So the well project, we currently have upwards to the amount of 6 million reserved for that project. We'll see if we need that much. We'll be able to further define that as we go through design here as David alluded to, we're in the process of executing a contract with the contractor for design and construction to meet those greedy ADAC requirements. So that's about 6 million. Water distribution system upgrades, we have approximately 4 million allocated for that. Same thing, we do our best to try to save money and be conscious of repairs money. That's what the current investment is. And then the INI project that's not listed there, or the wastewater system upgrades, a part of that was the INI. So that project, we have a program set up for about a million dollars a year, starting this year to 2026. We've got a pretty, we've learned from the past and we have a pretty robust program system to prioritize work with that. But again, the allocation for that is about a million a year. Any questions on that? I can, if not, I can show you guys where the Vale or the new station is going to be.
Thanks for the, thanks for, I can say thank you for the information about the investment. That was what I was looking for. Thank you.
No problem. And then for the new combined facility, that's approximately, if you look at, let's see, where's Vale Station? Vale Booster Station. If you look at where Vale, yeah, Mr. Persinger has it correct. It's about that location there where he has, you know, depict there. It's right by Alpine Meadows. It's pretty much in the same location as Vale Booster, but a little bit south. You know, just like Persinger described, we'll be decommissioning the Vale Booster Station. It's pretty in bad shape. It's pretty old. And then we'll reconstruct a new above ground system there, combining the three stations into one.
Thank you, John. Are there any other questions from the public tonight?
Can I just, can I just make a comment on the?
Yes.
Yeah, it's actually a response to Karen's question. I don't know if it was completely clear, but the AWU is paid for. It's nothing to do with the property taxes. It's paid for completely separately as utilities. So the fees you're paying to the utility are fund both capital and operational costs. I believe that's correct.
That's correct.
Nice.
Thank you for that clarification. Anyone on the phone that has questions that would like to unmute? Crystal, your hand is up.
I guess I'm curious as to the dialogue that's been occurring for the capacity of the systems that are in place right now. And maybe if you guys have been dialoguing with other government or the other municipal departments in regards to the opening up of land and potential new units that would be coming into Girdwood. And if our current infrastructure can support that, or if the new upgrades are going to support X amount of of new homes, I guess I'm kind of curious to hear what kind of dialogue has occurred for that.
Sure. So we have a master plan for our water system, and we have a master plan for our wastewater system. And part of those master plans is looking at potentially developable land within the service area to see, you know, if there's going to be, say, you know, a 200 home subdivision built and how we would be able to provide for that. And so we're always planning along with that. And then as developers come in and, you know, and decide to develop a piece of property or a subdivision, then we work with them to make sure that they size the infrastructure adequately to serve that. We also, as part of our water master plan is we, you know, we we upsize things both for fire protection and for future growth. So population growth and potential new service areas or additions to our service areas are something that we we try to track and we work with, you know, like Heritage Land Bank and some of the other larger property holders that we know, you know, down the road may have planned to develop that area.
Any other questions tonight? Mike?
I'd promise my last question was my last question, but this really is my last question. Obviously, the water supply is only to part of Girdwood. It, we, there isn't water to supply to the western parts of, or west of Glacier Creek, if I think west of Calhoun Creek. Is that, since there are at least other infrastructure funding potentially coming along in the near future, I know always there is the the concern is cost. But since there is a potential infrastructure funding in the future, is that something you could contemplate if the community wishes it?
Potentially, yeah. If there's a funding source and and the community desires to do that, it would definitely be something we would take into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Those are all pretty important questions, in my opinion. Any other questions tonight, representatives? Well, I want to thank you again, AWU for being here and Sandy and Mr. Persinger and John Mario. We do look forward to further communication and updates and those within code or how you're navigating each each hurdle, basically. So, and thank you, Sandy, for your outreach as well.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. And we'll work on some plans to again, keep you guys abreast of what we can and can't do. But for the time being, if you're interested whether that's on, don't forget to go to awu.biz and you can go to the fluoride on or off switch, currently off for Girdwood. And it's right there on that water quality page. So you can check that anytime that you would like.
Okay, great. Moving on to number two, update of housing developments in Girdwood, including Holton Hills. This is our placeholder to keep this discussion going in the community. Are there any updates tonight from any board members? Any, I don't see any hands. Yeah, yes, go ahead, Mike.
I don't have an update, but I just wanted to state that I don't have an update. As far as I'm aware, the next public discussion from any of the participants in the project will be no earlier than May with HLB, when they may have a public hearing on the disposal. And then it will have to go to assembly. So that's, that's the time scale we're aware of at the moment. We may, we may do something or land use may do something in the meantime to to have a broader discussion. That's currently up here.
Okay, I appreciate that update. Any other comments from the public? Anyone that cannot raise their hand, unmute? Any at all? Yeah, I don't see any. I'll go ahead and move to number three, legislative report, Senator Roger Holland or Representative James Kaufman. I thought I saw Representative Holland. Sorry, Senator Holland, but maybe I didn't.
He was here, but he might have got off for a bit. So we'll keep an eye out for him if he comes back.
Thank you. Thanks, Kyle. And Representative Kaufman, I have not heard if he could come tonight. Assembly members, John Whittleton or Suzanne LaFrance? We did receive an update from Suzanne. I could read part of that or Mike, did you want to hit on any things she highlighted?
I'll just get the message up and then summarize it if you like.
That'd be great.
Yep, I'll go through these very briefly. So the first one was just a, an update on reaportment. And a thank you to everyone who's provided comments so far. There will be a map 11 version two, which is on the website, is the one that's been pushed forward. There are two amendments which are going to be discussed, I believe, at the meeting on the 23rd. There's a special assembly meeting on the 23rd when those maps and any revisions will be will be discussed. Public hearing has already been closed. That was closed at the last meeting on the 15th. The Suzanne reminded us the Heritage Bank is taking comments on the draft HLB work program, but we'll be covering that later in today's meeting. There was an update on homelessness, which I'm not going to summarize because there's a lot of detail there. I won't do it justice. The assembly passed the ASD operating budget, which is up to 850 million. It's not an appropriation from the municipality. It's done in a separate, using a separate mechanism underneath the, under the school board. There is a, as many of you know, there was a proposal to provide a 10 year tax exemption for certain types of accessory dwelling units. That's currently, it was put on hold. There is going to be almost certainly an S version of that introduced. Although it's on the agenda for the special meeting tomorrow, it probably will not be covered tomorrow. It will probably be pushed onto a later meeting because there's some information requirements that are needed from the state assessor's office, and that hasn't been provided yet. And then there's also a fairly significant update about the port and the funding situation on the port. And we can add this, we can add this document to the minutes. But again, I'm not going to do it justice, but I try and summarize the port, the port information.
Thanks, Mike. That's great. Okay, if any one of our representatives comes up, we'll, we'll take them at that time. Brett, did you have a question?
This is actually Bryce, but yes, I'm up to the mayor's office. Just thought this might be a good opportunity to jump in and give a report regarding the municipality bank ridge.
Okay.
Yeah, so just a few quick things to comment, you know, just like what Mike was saying regarding the port funding situation. That's actually on my agenda for this section, just a quick mayor's office update. I'll jump right into that part. So Port of Alaska, I don't believe G boss has met since we received notice of a settlement for the Merad settlement. This is regarding the north expansion project a few years ago. So municipality received a settlement judgment around 367 million dollars. That, of course, you know, the administration is incredibly cautiously optimistic since that money is not in the bag, per se. There's still an opportunity for Merad to appeal for another approximately 30 days since the judgment was made on February 24th, so about a month ago. So that's the major update of the funding situation at the Port of Alaska. Today also, you know, the mayor's office is really happy to announce that we are going to be working at the Anchorage Assembly and proposing the Anchorage Assembly a naming change for the Port of Alaska to be the Don Young Port of Alaska. So we're excited to see that, you know, in honor of his service to our state for, for his entire life. So we're happy to be announcing that. Moving on, I know homelessness isn't really as much of a concern as it is in Anchorage as is in Girdwood. But homelessness, we just entered into finally a cooperative purchase of the Sakai Inn in Midtown Anchorage to handle to handle complex care needs. And this is all part of the Sullivan Arena exit strategy as we enter into a new and alternate forms of care for our homeless population. So that's part of the exit strategy, so that we're happy to see that go through in a cooperative agreement with the Rasmus Foundation and Catholic Social Services. And then lastly, just to touch on really quick, the municipal election is going on right now. I know there are some people who are receiving some issues with their ballots arriving. They should be arriving shortly. And if you have any questions on that, be sure to call the clerk's office at 243-VOTE. That's 243-8683. That's the voter hotline. As of right now, they're due on April 5, 2022. So it's upcoming here in a few weeks by mail or Dropbox. So if there's any questions on any of these, oh, and lastly, for the times you guys do come to Anchorage to pick up groceries and whatnot, if you have any pothole concerns in Anchorage or just road maintenance concerns, you know, just encourage you to report that. I'll put this number in chat as well, but it's going to be 343-MEND or 343-6363 to report any road maintenance issues you might be having in Anchorage area. So I know you guys have your own Girdwood service area, but for Anchorage area, that's beneficial. So those are kind of the top level reviews for the mayor's office. But of course, you know, through the chairs, I'll take any questions if there are any for the mayor's office.
Thank you, Bryce. Are there any questions for Bryce Wilbanks tonight? Chief Weston has a question.
Oh, hi. Just wanted to know the status of first quarter budget revisions, if they've been completed or not.
So yeah, first quarter budget revisions are still undergoing, you know, review and revision. And so as part of the Fire Department, I'd for like a full proper update, probably reach out over to Ms. Home Manager's office.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions?
Wonderful, and I'll stick around for a little bit longer to answer any questions and stay in probably for another hour or so.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. We'll have your name on the next agenda in April.
Oh, yeah, no, thank you. I think, you know, it's good communication. The mayor's office is really trying to reach out to all community councils and Board of Supervisors and have an attend, you know, have attendance there for as long as possible. So, yeah, we're going to start making this much more consistent. So we, you know, appreciate the time and giving a report and we're here to, we're here to be community, be here for the community. So thank you.
Thank you. Move to number four, supervisor reports. Does anyone have any reports? Mike?
Just one brief comment. I think at the last meeting, we passed a resolution for to support a, or a non, actually, it was a non objection, wasn't it? For a variance, a stream setback variance, which was meant to be heard at the at the Board of, which was the zoning Board of Appeal, I think it's called, the Examiners and Appeal. That was postponed to next month, so that's still still in in operation and process and hasn't been resolved yet.
Okay, thank you. Guy?
Yeah, thanks, Brianna. I was just going to mention the fire station has been working on their EMS funding with the Muni. And they're still struggling with some terms of the contract. Their Board of Directors has become involved and they're, they've been working on that. But I, and Chief Weston can probably verify this, but as of today, that we don't have a final contract for the EMS portion. That's all I got.
Thank you, Guy. Real quick for Parks and Recreation, there is a special trails committee meeting tomorrow night at 7:00. And that is also in the packet. Go to Service Providers, five minutes. Chief Weston, welcome, welcome.
Hello. Okay, I just do a few things. First, thank you, Guy, that, yes, the contract is not signed. I think we're in kind of a stalemate at the moment, so we're going to just proceed ahead with our operations. Because it seems like we're at an impasse of getting it signed. We are asking, though, in first quarter budget revisions for the restoration of that 15,000 that was taken out, that was approved by the Assembly, but then there wasn't a funding source. And so it, I'm understanding is there's an area-wide task tax cap that they couldn't certify it against. And so that's why suddenly the budget was short 15,000 and we were notified in January. Besides that, as you know, I've been requested to do a lot of fundraising. So I'm now going to tell you about the fundraising that I do. And you might ask, why is she doing a lot of fundraising? I don't see the other departments doing a lot of fundraising. Basically, a lot of these issues are outside of our fire service area, whereas in Anchorage and Chugyak, they're within the fire service area. So either we have to rely on area-wide EMS to fund us or we have to fundraise. So here we go. I received a $500 grant for, from NFPA and State Farm for Wildfire Day, which will be May 7. I received around $4,700 from forestry to, for pumpkins, so a portable water tank for Girdwood, and then some extra forestry supplies for wildfire season. We received almost now $13,000 from Hillcorp employees and some private donations to help us fund extrication equipment. Additionally, I've been working a lot with DOT on funding alternatives. And then separately from that, Senator Michichi down in, down on the Kenai Peninsula was kind enough to put in a legislative request for us and the other 11 departments south of us for extrication equipment as a legislative capital request. So I'm very fortunate that my Kenai Peninsula partners were willing to help work with us. We did put in a first quarter budget revision request for extrication tools to the municipality. However, they were asking for justification for every tool. And so it got to the point where I've already gone down some other funding source paths, so I'm going to do that. Firehouse Subs is going to fundraise for us the Glacier City chapter and also the Cooper Landing chapter to provide rehab supplies in April, so happy about that. We are, I put in a request through to FirstNet through the Emergency Operations Center for the state to get a FirstNet or AT&amp;T COW or COLT. This is a portable communications device put up in Turnigan Pass. And then I've started a working group to work on that. I'm not sure how that's going to go, but it's the best option we have to try and get cell service up in Turnigan Pass. So if you know anybody who has sway in that, please support that. Additionally, I have, the Alaska Department of Highway of Transportation has provided me a lot of the data on the sewer highway, Sterling Highway, all the crash data. It's not amalgamated yet, but I'll be probably putting something on that up, including a website for us for fundraising for ourselves and the other 11 departments south of us for extrication tools for the highway. Other than that, we are planning a bus accident scenario practice exercise with the Kenai Peninsula Fire Departments. We have a hazmat exercise scheduled with AFD's hazmat team, which is the South Central Hazmat Team. Spring is a great time to join our CERT team if you're looking for something to do once a month, on a Monday, the fourth Monday of the month. CERT gets together, we give you light training, and then if we have a big emergency, you can help augment our staffing and help with roadblocks, light search and rescue, when we have search searches for missing people, things like that. Currently, we have 117, we've done 117 calls, 15 calls this March, so pretty busy. We have a firefighter one class going on and again, 13 ALS providers. Any quest, and we are a little concerned about the 19% projected increase in tourism for the summer with the cruise ship passengers, but we'll work on it. I also have a grant submitted for a replacement boat, because again, we have to fundraise for boats. Grant for turnouts, however, turnouts will probably need to replace before we find out about the grant. Grant request in for extrication tools federally and then also a federal request for staffing for an engineer position 24/7. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief Weston? I see a hand. Thank you so much for that update. I don't know how you keep track of it all. Guy has a question.
I just want to say thank you for the fundraising. I mean, you know, just the monetary amount you called off is like 20K that we wouldn't have in our pocket, you wouldn't have in your pocket to keep us safe, so much appreciated. And I did see in the, another comment I did see in the contract that Girdwood should have the equivalent equipment as the Anchorage area-wide EMS. And so hopefully that'll be a bargaining tool to get that extrication equipment that you, that we all need, okay?
Yeah, I don't believe we are going to get any funding for extrication equipment from the municipality of Anchorage. Therefore, I have looked to my, to the state and then also, you know, as that state capital request. So in doing the review with the other 11 departments, I mean, the bad news was finding out that we do have some of the oldest equipment on, I think there's another department that has equipment as old as us. So both of us were, you know, the old equipment people. AFD was able to give us their reserve, reserve. They also have 13-year-old equipment, again, 10-year-old equipment is the standard. The old equipment doesn't cut properly on the new cars. But I believe I will have very good news for us on this front in April.
Thank you so much, Chief Weston, for all of your hard work. Any other questions? Hey, I don't see any. Is Chief Ashay here?
I talked to chief. He wasn't able to make it tonight because of a conflict with Whittier. But we have been working closely on several items. They've been quite helpful with parking enforcement associated with Aliaska Hotel, guest overflow, and then also busy days up at the resort. So we appreciate that. At times, they are writing parking tickets. It is a very cumbersome process when they go to write a parking ticket because of the state procedures to do that. But when they have to use that enforcement tool, they have. They have had to deal with several repeat offender violations here in town, which has taken up a lot of their time in court proceedings. So that has been a busy thing for them, but it seems like they're getting ahead on on a few of those. So that's been good. And we are currently planning for Slush Cup. We predict that to be a very big event, as it has been the first big event in two years that we've had here in Girdwood. And if we have a sunny day like we've had these last couple of weekends, we we see that coming. So so he is staffing up for that. And and we have a temporary impound yard set up with Fred's Towing to help for the day events there. So so otherwise, they are staffing. They are still hiring one position, but it sounds like they have a very good lead on that. The difficult part about that is finding a qualified officer. Their preference is to find an officer who is qualified and has gone through the academy. Otherwise, you have to hire somebody and put them through academy, and they hope that they can make it through academy. So like all police departments here in Alaska, they are struggling to hire. But they're very appreciative of the officers who have been with them for a long time. That's that's update for Whittier Police at this time.
Thank you, Kyle. And if there are no questions, you are next with Roads, Parks and Rec.
Sure, we'll start with Parks. The biggest thing, I guess, in the winter for us in Parks is grooming. And huge thanks to our volunteers who both do grooming and maintain the machines. We're in a classic event right now. We have all three machines down because of different things. They just get worked hard in the winter and there's some welding going on today. There are some coolant leaks being fixed and all done through volunteer efforts. So we appreciate those volunteers out there doing that. The grooming season usually lasts about another two to three weeks, so we recommend you getting out there. It's the best time of year to get on the trails and and we'll try to have them groom for you there. We are currently hiring for two seasonal park positions. And that is on the Muni website. You can go to the job postings there and look through for park caretakers and pay attention. Look for the physicians posted for Girdwood if you know anybody interested. As I said, we're are interviewing currently and hope to have people hired in time to start early May for us. And then, as always, Margaret and I and our trust trustee volunteer, Don Davis, have been keeping up with the garbage and mutt mits and all those things. And we appreciate everybody out there keeping us informed, especially the mutt mits are empty. It's great to see those being used and 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 deposited right into the garbage can. So thank you for that. Switching over to roads, we have entered breakup. And if you live on Timberline or Aliaska View or live in any of these dirt roads, you are realizing that. And our crews are working every day to smooth them out. And they're out there today ripping down the ice. Aliaska, we must have pulled up eight inches of ice in different areas, and so the roads are starting to pop. And so they will continue to keep going that way. Sometimes they have to pull off because the traffic's just too heavy for the grader to operate on those narrow roads. But they try to get out there, especially during the weekdays, every afternoon. We usually start about noon and they go until about 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock when the traffic is too heavy with those coming home. And then we hope it frees up and then we'll start again the next day. So so please be patient, just take your time. It's that time of year when the roads are like this, but they can still get by if you just take your time out there with that. So if you do have problems or there's any real big slush piles that are building up or things like that, feel free to always give us a call and we'll try to respond right away. And then with this freestyle, if roads get slick, especially hills, we'll try to get a sander out there and put some sand on it. That usually lasts until it warms up and then the sand falls down into the into the ice in that aspect. Just quickly, and with major projects, we are working through the Aliaska Creek culvert replacements. And so we're in the design phase right now and we're out for final comments with the different departments within the Muni. And we hope to have those plans completed. And if our funding works right, we will try to tackle one of those culverts this summer with our term contractor, Western, and and get that replaced. We have several other projects that we need to take care of. We will definitely finish the patch repair on Ruann from the blowout last year and finish the armoring there and then go around and address other issues that we couldn't tackle before freeze up associated with the Halloween weekend storm. Speaking of the Halloween weekend storm, we are currently working with the EOC in the state on the emergency declaration and getting all our paperwork in to start seeking reimbursement from the state. And at the same time, we are also getting everything together that we can hopefully seek mitigation funds from the FEMA to put in the permit fix down there in Ruann, which is a box culvert that will fit there. What we did replace the culverts with is two 60-inch, 80-foot-long culverts down there. They are adequate at this time to handle the flow, but it is not an adequate fish passage. And for large flood events, there's concern that those culverts, you know, could have problems, especially if another tree comes and gets stuck in them like we had with the last round. So so the long-term fix is a large box culvert that would go down there, which would help protect the sewer line and the gas line that runs through that area. So we're working through that. And then funding wise, we have spent $156,000 with the contractor so far of our $700,000 budget. Our expenses for March are looking much less as we're just running a smaller crew dealing with the peeling and the spring breakup conditions, which is good because we need, we try to keep a reserve for those summer projects so we can get things done in that sense. And then overall, all our budgets are online. They're about within 20% expenditures for the year, so that's good as we come out of the first quarter and and looking good along those lines. Later on tonight, we will talk about budget as we do have a first quarter budget revision that is now with the administration. And we'll go to talk more about capital budgets at that time, too. But I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions for Kyle? Great update. Mike has a question.
It's about the refurbishment and the, sorry, about the the money for the relating to the storm. So we had a, I know there was a federal disaster declaration for the Kenai Peninsula that did not include Anchorage. So the the money you're talking about for replacing the bridge and doing a long-term fix, that's completely separate from the emergency declaration. Is that correct?
Correct. So the service area is not part of the federal emergency declaration. We're part of the state emergency declaration. And that's because the total expenses of our repairs so far, as compared to the population of Anchorage, we don't qualify in that formula. But we do qualify under the state. So at this point in time, we are seeking our reimbursement from the state. Now, it will be up to the state if they want to try to seek reimbursement for those funds from the feds. But with the, as an emergency declaration, But with the, being, as an emergency declaration to it, there is a possibility that this opens us up for FEMA funding for mitigation. And mitigation comes from a different pot. And basically FEMA carries money so that helps to provide funds to mitigate this from happening in the future. And so we're trying to qualify for those funds through the help from the state to, to get that. Now it's a long road, you know, and we have other requests out there too on the state level. We will definitely be looking at the capital or the infrastructure dollars that are coming from the federal government with those grants and, and chasing those resources as well. Cause we, we know that in order to get that FEMA funding, it, it, it's a pretty difficult process to get through and, and get approved and compete against everybody else out there who may be seeking that same funding.
Thanks, Kyle. Yeah, I think my understanding is there would, there may have been some miscommunication in the, in the earlier stages where it wasn't made clear that although the municipality as a whole has a large population and large budget, the, the work falls under the service area, which obviously is just Girdwood and has a much smaller population and a much smaller budget. So the work is a much higher percentage of our overall budget on roads. You know, it's half basically a yearly budget on roads. So I'm not sure if there's a plan to fix that or just rely on the state. It sounds like it's the latter.
At this point is working with the state.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks, Kyle. I see that we have Assembly Member John Whittleton and ASD Board Liaison Kelly Lessons on. So we'll go back up to number three for legislative report and Kelly, could we, I think you are here. Ready to go.
Sure. I am here. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Great. Um, thank you so much. Yeah, I was over at Hillside and toggling between each of these is always, I want to get it right. Okay. So let's see, the last time I was here, I don't remember whether we had actually signed our AEA and Totem contracts, but that's the Anchorage Education and Totem encompasses so many of the support staff to make our schools function. So we've signed those two very large contracts and those folks are just integral in making our schools run. So I hope that they, my personal hope is that they encourage our educators and our school leaders to remain with our school system. We know that we're seeing lots of turnover across the nation. So that teacher retention is absolutely crucial. The board also passed the budget for the 22 to 23 school year. And again, that focuses on maintaining the people teacher ratio. We're using a lot of federal funds to do so. We're also using our federal funds to really target learning loss in the upcoming, in summer school and in the upcoming school year. So there's some great initiatives. If you all get a chance to go into town and up to the Anchorage Museum, I cannot stress highly how wonderful the 50th Annual ASD Art Show is. It'll be on display in the atrium of the museum through April 1st. So please avail yourselves of that opportunity. I just got my, my ballot in the mail today. Again, ASD has its bond proposition. It's proposition number one. It's a two-year bond for 31 projects at 25 different sites at $111 million. We will be retiring $102 million during that two-year timeframe. So I can talk more about it, but I have had the chance to speak to it already. The big news is that the board has been really focused on the superintendent search. We met for eight and a half hours yesterday with our, we had five semifinalists that we narrowed the field down to. And we expected to bring two finalists to Anchorage, but instead we thought it would be really important to get community input and we, we wanted to make sure we brought our top three choices. So we're adjusting, we thought we had a schedule. We're still adjusting that final schedule. But I think that you can all, we, our community can anticipate that on Monday, the 28th and Tuesday, the 29th, so in a week, we'll have two very full days for those three finalists. They will, there will be maybe a media component, sort of introducing folks, those finalists to the community. There'll be site visits. And then really crucially, there'll be opportunities for different stakeholder groups, educators, union, you know, we have nine, nine unions that have signed contracts with the, with the administration, parents, community members, students themselves. So we're going to have different opportunities. So we're, I'll have more information forthcoming. I just don't have a final schedule to share with you at this time. But I anticipate that after we have those two very full days and after we get community members impressions and feedback, at that point, the board would extend a contract offer to one of those three finalists. So that's kind of the amount of information I'm able to share right now. We have not yet made those finalists' names public, but I promise that I will reach out to all of my community councils as soon as I know what the plan is. I'll pause there. Are there any questions about the superintendent search?
I do really quick, Kelly. Thank you. And maybe you already said this, but if your goal is to have more community involvement and comments on the 28th and 29th, is there a place that community members can go and ask questions?
Great question. I anticipate that based on, again, we had drafted a schedule for two finalists and the schedule we had is not compatible with three. So we need to adjust that. It will be like, very likely that after the school days have ended, that will be, there will be time, there will be blocks of time for Zoom-based forums, meet and greets, Q and A, community forums. So that's, it's being developed right now, but we wanted to make sure we're going to focus on the, the finalists doing site visits, the finalists have opportunity, having opportunities to connect with people within the district kind of during that school day. And then at the end of the day, when community members, when educators might be more free using that chunk of time. So that's what I just wanted to flag for your, for, just put it in your mind. And I'm absolutely positive that we'll have more information out. But again, we made this decision about, about six something last night. So this is pretty fresh. And we have a couple of board members who are also down in Juneau doing some lobbying. So we're just trying to get all of our ducks in a row. Does that help?
Yes. I just didn't know there was a website or something specific.
No. Well, you know, we do have a superintendent search website, but I don't think there's anything current. This is, this is, this is more current than anything that's there.
Okay. Yeah. Yesterday at six.
Yes, that would be the place to go when, and I'm sure I have. I'm sure I will be sharing this information with you over email. That was the plan, but I wanted to mention that. A couple of other, ah, here's the link. Can I, is the chat available? Where's my chat?
I think it's disabled.
Oh, it's disabled. I'll email you.
It's not, but send it to us. We'll put in the minutes.
Okay, excellent. Um, let's see, what else did I want to share? If you do have kids in the school system, there's a school climate and connectedness survey that is open through the 25th. And if you are returning, if you have a student who is returning to ASD, online registration will open April 25th for next year. And the first day of school for grades one through six will be August 18th and August 25th for kindergarteners. And, oh, the last thing I wanted to share is that our meetings next month are on Mondays. So Monday, the 4th, I think it's to avoid election day on Tuesday. The calendars are created like a year in advance. Anyway, so that means that the following meeting will be on the next Girdwood Board of Supervisors meeting. So I will send you an email update for that meeting. But that probably means this is my last Girdwood meeting, however, my own personal election turns out, because the board reorganizes itself on an annual basis to give board members different. You know, we, we represent the entire community, but on an annual basis, we might take a different chunk of the city. So it's been a wonderful privilege to get to know the Girdwood community a little bit more. And I've really enjoyed the questions you ask and I'll pause there if there are any more questions.
Wow. Thank you, Kelly. I didn't realize that it shifted every year. Are there any other questions for Kelly Lessons tonight? I don't see any, but thank you so much for being here and all the information. I have a long agenda, so we'll go on to.
But I will, I will reach out to you and to all of the other community councils that I represent as soon as I get more tangible information about that search. We want to get that out and into people's hands as soon as possible.
Great. That's exciting.
Okay. All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
You too. John Whittleton, are you still here?
I am still here. Hello, everyone. Sorry it was late. We had, I was there with Kelly at the Hillside Community Council, which is still going on. So just a couple of things. And I do may have mentioned, you know, Don Young passing is such a watershed thing. I don't watershed, you know. I guess we all knew it had to happen, but you know, we were used to having him around forever. So it's, it's a kind of an occasion, you know, when I got to Alaska in 1982, I was in Fairbanks and they had a, they come meet your congressman. And I thought, wow, that's really can happen, you know, down in Louisiana, you didn't get a chance to do that. And went to, you know, the small classroom with about 10, 12 people and this guy comes in and it turns out it's our congressman. It just seemed incredible. Thing about Alaska that, you know, you'd have such access to your elected officials at all levels. And that meeting, he certainly showed in a hurry that he had that fiery combative way about him and had a couple of other interactions over the years. And it was, you know, he's a pretty remarkable man in many ways. So anyway, I just feel compelled to note that, though you all know it. So we are, we have a meeting tomorrow because we didn't finish last Tuesday. So we'll polish off some things that were on the agenda. The big item that remains that will actually be on a Wednesday meeting specifically for reapportionment. And we've got kind of the Whittleton Wells map that I think you may have seen. And it doesn't really change anything for turning an arm in Girdwood. It would remain in District Six. So that map's like a base map. And then there are two amendments proposed. And we saw a couple of days ago, a possible amendment to an amendment, which is the way we do things. So we'll see what happens on Wednesday. I mean, there could be other amendments too. We'll just have to see. I think you, I've learned to expect the unexpected. I don't, but there won't be big changes. I mean, I, there won't be anything really big for, for your area. In terms of land bank work plan, comments through April 8th. And I have to believe you have a committee and comments ready to go. It's such a big deal for Girdwood. So, but that's also a lot of South Anchorage. You know, Hillside has some critical H L B lands. So they get a lot of comments from there as well. You know, the homeless process that we've worked out with Assembly and the mayor that's moving forward. And I've mentioned that many times and people ask, you know, I haven't seen anything happen. What's going on? And things are happening. We, we as a group, the municipality plus Brazmason, Widener Homes, Chugatz Alaska, Doyon's pitching in, and I think some others is buying the Sakaian for medically complex needs. You know, people, we have people in the Sullivan area going through cancer treatment and wheelchairs and so on. And Brother Francis has about 40 people who are kind of have medical, high level medical needs. And if we pull all them together in the Sakaian, they'll get better treatment, ultimately cheaper. And a particular interest is that we'll also allow Brother Francis to increase its occupancy level to 125, which was a level that they did fairly well at. So it increases the system capacity. We also put $800,000 toward design and impossible early construction or something of another low barrier shelter that would design for 200 and is very likely to be between the old police headquarters and the evidence lot. So it's a much smaller footprint than had been discussed before because it's a much smaller shelter and it's not really sheltered. Both this one and Brother Francis, it'll be, you know, kind of basic, you know, simple shelter for emergency use. But along with navigation, there's office space at Brother Francis where Beans was. And then this structure would be built with really more office space and other uses than sleeping. So that you'd have groups in there that would help people who are homeless and help them find a place to live, get them on their feet, job, you know, placement, get them lined up for treatment if they need it. So whatever it is. So it's really, you know, fairly inclusive. It's not just a place to, you know, drop a mat and sleep for the night. I think you all know that we got, after seven years of one lawsuit after the other and the money from one going to pay the lawyers for the next one, we got to MARAD, the federal organization that bungled a project at the port. And we got the settlement we were looking for, 367 million to undo what was done. And that's critical. It doesn't really move us forward on the port, but that piece has to be undone. They may appeal and it's, so we're not really counting on having the money right away, but expect, you know, within a year or so, we'll have that. We also have plans. We're looking for 600 million from the state to do, replace one of the two main docks. And then, you know, once that's done, we're actually in tremendous, much better shape than we are now, which is very tentative because the dock has fallen apart. And then we'll move on to doing the second dock and possibly some third dock. So there's a lot of process there, you know, or progress. You know, it's been a number of years, but we're moving forward. And we all know that's very critical. You know, piece of infrastructure, sewered and whittier docks and the dock across the inlet in Matsu just won't do what we do at Port of Anchorage or Port of Alaska, which may be Don Young Port or Port of Don Young or something at some point. It's an interesting proposal. We, I think we talked about the accessory dwelling units. There's a proposal to give tax abatement. And I think Mike has made very clear, it doesn't work very well in Girdwood. So, but that's also coming forward. Meg Zaltell has been working with the administration to come up with a revised version, which I think we will see tomorrow, but we won't take action on it. I don't expect until the following regular meeting. But those are some highlights. We are, you know, we're talking about possibly taking over, they call it sponsorship of the Birchwood Airport. And we, I think we did, or we're about to, maybe it's tomorrow, change our code a little bit so that it doesn't say Merrill Field, but it says airports. So it opens the door and code to be able to do that. So of course that means, well, what about Girdwood Airport? And at this point, we of course all know there's an airport at Girdwood also run by the, or sponsored by DOT. But it's, you know, we're looking at Birchwood right now and I expect that that may or may not be taken over. That'll be a year-long process of learning about it and seeing what we could do and, and then growing into it. So if, you know, Girdwood's airport is a very different animal than Birchwood. But it's something for you to think about and I would be very interested in, in hearing, you know, over time, there's plenty of time to do this. It's, you know, is there benefits having the city do it as opposed to having DOT be the sponsor of that airport? So keep that on your kind of checklist for things to think about. So those are highlights. If people have questions, I'll be, I'll hang out till you're done probably.
Thank you, John. Are there any questions for Mr. Whittleton tonight? Mike?
I have a couple of questions. The first one is, I think you mentioned there may be an S version for the ADU tax exemption or whatever replaces that being introduced tomorrow. Would that be a public hearing as well? Or would that be delayed?
I, you know, I haven't seen the S version because of our open meetings act things. It was a surprise to both of us. But I do expect from what we have heard that it will be substantial enough that there will absolutely be another public hearing. I would fully expect that. I think it'll go to the Community Economic Development Committee probably first to look at and then a new public hearing.
Okay, thank you. And my second question was, my second question was going to be about the airport, but you've already introduced that. My third question was, there's currently something going through planning and zoning about reinvestment focus areas. And I just wondered if you could say anything about that or is that premature?
I have not seen it. A lot of stuff comes through and then it, then it's sent to us. So.
Okay. We'll talk about that later.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Any other questions? From the public or on the phone to unmute? Okay, John, I think that's it.
All right. I'll be here. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Moving to public comment. Persons offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Is anyone making public comment this evening? I don't see any hands. Anyone on the phone? Okay, I don't see any. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Number six, permitting for Girdwood Forest Fair 2022. Karen. I know you came last month. Do you have something else? There she is. Karen Takaro, you are muted if you.
Yes, sorry.
There you go.
Yeah, sorry. I was having trouble getting unmuted.
Yeah, sorry. I was having trouble getting unmuted. Yes, thank you for putting me on the agenda. It's good to have an update. The Forest Fair Committee has met, and we will have some changes to the site plan, the map of where the food vendors go. And the rest of the fair is pretty much going to be similar what we did years past. A few other updates, just heads up, you know, we'll have that draft site plan, which includes like kind of the description of everything that's going to happen. We have verified that we will have paid assistance for the traffic control at Aliaska Highway. And I did verify Kyle and I talked, and I didn't recollect correctly, but we will also assist with, you know, kind of helping monitor the garbage situation within the Town Square Park during the Forest Fair. And as always, you know, we will have paid security. And this year, I may have mentioned at the last meeting, we, in 2019, we offered a bus service from Anchorage to Girdwood. And this year, we will be offering that type of bus service, you know, round trip Anchorage to Girdwood, all three days of Forest Fair. So hopefully that'll help alleviate some of the parking issues that's going to sometimes be a problem. And we'll continue to cooperate with, you know, GBOS and Girdwood, Whittier Police, and everybody to try to make the fair as safe and happy for everyone in the community. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any ahead of our draft submittal.
Thank you, Karen. Are there any questions for Karen tonight? From the board? Well, for the site plan, do you have a date on that, Karen?
I will bring a draft to you, I believe, at the April meeting, so it should be in your packet for the April meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the public? All right, I look forward, I'm sure everyone does, to April's update. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
And everyone on your board.
Thanks.
Okay, number seven, agenda item L U C 2110-05, Aliaska Employee Housing Two, Proposed for Track B, Aliaska Prince Edition on North Base Road immediately west of Hotel Aliaska, east of existing employee housing. Group will be seeking GBOS resolution of support for development master plan. Connor Scher presenting. Good evening, Connor.
Hello, Brianna and everyone. Thank you for having me here again. You can hear me all all right?
Yes.
Great. Yeah, so we came before our Land Use Committee last week, excuse me, and got a, got a motion for asking for resolution of support from Girdwood Board of Supervisors. Go before the, excuse me, we go before the Planning and Zoning Commission next, well, on the 11th of April, and the meeting is going to be at 6:30. And the, this is part of the process for a development master plan, was a requirement of, of development in, in this zoning district and for a project of this scale. And I went over a couple of the, the modifications from our initial presentation last week. And so I'll just run through some of those today and then open it up for any questions from the board or the public. So the project is going to have 71 dwelling units in a, in a three-story building. And originally, we had been requesting a number of alternative, or we had been proposing alternative standards for, for a number of otherwise codified standards in, in Girdwood Land Use Code. The development master plan allows the applicant to propose alternative standards or, or other ways, meeting requirements written in code. And after meeting with the planning department and revising the design, we were able to reduce those requests. Well, not variances, but differences from, from the, from the code. So that now the only, the only standard that we're, that we're requesting an alternative from is the requirement for child children's play space, which a multifamily unit or multifamily building of, of this scale would, would require normally. And our, our information from Aliaska is that the residents of the employee housing aren't going to really have children, they're, they're not, and this isn't intended to, to really house a lot of families. And so a greater value to, to the residents of the building and to the employees would, would be some exercise rooms for them. And so that is what we're proposing as an alternative. And we do make the argument that the project is adjacent to acres of trails and wooded areas that, that can provide outdoor recreation for children and adults as well. There is a, there is currently a trail connection to Stumpy's Early Winter Trail and some of the other Moose Meadow Trails in the, in the winter. And we're, we're planning on, on maintaining that trail connection. So hopefully that's, that's the argument that we will have, we will get support for. A couple of the questions that came up last week were the number of occupants. Right now, the building has 71 units and with the, with the occupant load, and that comes out to about 120 residents. And, but the, the idea with, with the units being that most of them are studio units, and so those would have one or two people in them. And then the one-bedroom units would either have probably two people who are, who are either a couple or two people who are roommates and sharing that space. Let's see, I'm trying to remember anything else that, that came up in the last week or in the last, since, since last we came and gave a presentation on this. We did receive some comments back from the Traffic Engineering Department requesting us to, to start meeting with them and, and talk about the Austrian parking standards. We're, we're hoping to reach an agreement with them that, that we don't need to provide, or that we only need to provide basically two more parking spaces than are currently in Track B and Track A with, with the application of a number of parking reductions. Those, those are entered into specifically with the Traffic Department. And so at this point, those are the only agency comments that, that we have heard from planning. So that's a good sign. And we've also heard from planning that, that the report is generally favorable of, of this development. And, and so we're not expecting a lot of surprises from the Planning Department. And it seems that we have the support of, of the support of the municipality behind this project. So it's very exciting for Girdwood and for us and for Aliaska that, that there is so much interest in getting this project permitted and constructed. We are planning on beginning construction in May of this year. And so that will be ongoing until probably early fall of 2023. So to wrap this presentation up, I am asking the Board of Supervisors on, on behalf of Zer Architects and Aliaska that they send a resolution of support to the Department, including the staff packet that will go to the commissioners. I believe that the board, as I see it now on the screen, has a, has a draft resolution of support. So I'm, I'm happy to take any questions on the project or that might want to, that someone on the board might want to add a note to the resolution if they want. But otherwise, I, I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Connor. Thanks for keeping it concise. I think the one other item from Land Use last week was about lighting and light pollution and what the, the design is for the lighting outside.
Yes.
Is there, Connor?
Yes, I am. Do you want me to respond to that?
Yeah, I just didn't hear you, so I didn't know if your mic was.
Yes, okay. So there was a question that came up at Land Use Committee about the site lighting for this project. And one of the requirements of the development master plan is that when we address the lighting of the site and, in order to ensure that it, that it meets the intent of the Girdwood Land Use Code, that there is anti-glare luminaries and that the, the project is not contributing to global light pollution, but also sort of local light pollution shining into neighbors and things. And so we did do an analysis, or we had our electrical engineers do an analysis of the, of the site and found that the existing masts in the parking area provide enough illumination on the site that we won't be needing any more additional site lighting. And so the only lighting that, that we will be providing on the exterior will be building lighting primarily for the entrances. And those will all be required to have anti-glare lenses and there, there, there are height restrictions to how high they can be. And so, so we are, we are conscious of, of the need to, to prevent light pollution as, as best we can. And so, so really the, the amount of lighting associated with this project is going to be quite minimal.
Thanks for speaking to that, Connor.
Yeah, I hope that answers your question.
Yes. We have two more. Mike and then Guy.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. One, the first one's probably more operational, maybe you won't be able to speak to this. But I was just wondering how, how this argument about not needing a children's play space because it won't be rented to families, how that ties in with, with issues around fair housing and housing discrimination? Or is that just not a factor when it's include housing?
Sorry, Mike, I was just writing, writing something down. Yeah, I think that's a great question. I'm, I, I don't know personally anything about the Fair Housing Act other, other than that it exists. So I'm, I'm afraid I can't really speak to that portion of, of your question. I will say that the, that the intent, that the, the argument is not that we are not providing the amenities for the occupants, but that rather we're providing an alternative amenity to, to the occupants.
On the assumption that there will be a few children there?
Right, that's correct.
Yeah. Will there be, will there be somebody who could speak to the operational side when it goes in front of P and Z, do you know?
I have not heard from Pomeroy or from Aliaska or from the contractor as to who might be at the presentation. We, we have advocated that, that someone from one of those groups or all of those groups attend. So I can, I can, I can say that, that we hope to have someone there at the hearing.
And, and the other question is very much something I think you can answer. So the, I know there's a, there's a discussion in the, in the application about how this ties in with the Aliaska Resort Master Plan. And I just wanted to check, sorry, there's a lot of noise online here. I just wanted to check, is that the, that's the 2007 master plan? Because my understanding is there's a process currently underway to update the master plan. And then if that's the case, the, I know that the narrative talks about 1,377 dwelling units. Is that? I don't understand how that number can be the right number of dwelling units for the resort area. That seems far too high, and I just wondered if you could explain where that came from. Unfortunately, I haven't got a copy of the 2007 plan. I couldn't find it online.
Yes, Mike, I thank you for that question. The, so, so to bring some other people up to speed, there is an area master plan for Aliaska that covers the entire, both base areas as well as the mountain and, and use, and is used sort of as a guiding document for development in, in, in future projects in, for the resort. And you are correct, the, the current owners are, are looking at revising the plan. I don't know the status of, of that revision, so we are only working on what has been adopted and is being implemented. And so what, what the 2007 plan identified was a number of development areas throughout the resort area. Basically, mostly around the new base area where the hotel is, and then on the tracks, uphill of Earlberg Avenue, between the new and the old base areas. And those would be anything from single-family homes to apartment buildings to other short-term guest accommodations. And the plan did a very strange thing of treating them all as residential units. And, and so it created a, a table of how many residential units it, the plan was proposing. And in that table, it also included that there would be 24 employee housing units on Track B, which is the, the track across Earlberg from the hotel, so where the main parking area is. And so when we went to work on this development master plan, we found that we had to, that we were basically increasing the number of, of dwelling units for the planned area. And instead of, instead of taking residential units from another part of the, of the development, for example, from Track A, we, we were able to propose increasing the number of residential units for the entire planned area by this project. I mean, it fell within, or it fell under the, the trigger for a public hearing of amending that plan. And so the, the numbers referenced in the application, in the narrative, come from that 2007 area plan of how many residential units there are for the entire resort. And then how many there were originally planned for Track B, and that we're increasing that number in, increasing the, the overall number of residential units for the, for the area plan.
Okay, so that's the, so when you talk about the number of residential units in the 2007 plan, you mean the ones that were proposed, not the ones which actually exist because of the, far fewer actually exist?
That's right.
Yeah, okay, understood. Thank you. So this was just about not having to go through a plan amendment?
Yes, that's right.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah, specifically.
Sorry about the technical, going into the gory details. Thank you, though.
Guy, go ahead.
Yeah, Connor, just real quick, what the need for this? Do you plan to fill this unit up right away? Is your employee housing need that great? Or will it take some time to fill these 75, 71 units?
Thanks for the question. It's, it's my understanding that, that the demand is already there for these units. The Nordic Spa during its development was anticipated to increase the staffing, I think, 60 staff? I, I may have that, may have conflated that in my memory, but. may have conflated that in my memory, but a significant increase of staff were were anticipated for the operation of the Nordic Spa itself. And and they do face a great deal of of struggle keeping employees and and so they, so Aliasko identified additional need for employee housing specifically. And for a for a resort as as large and with as many facilities as it has, twenty-four units does seem to be quite low. So it it's my understanding that that they that they do already have an idea of who will be living in these new units and how quickly they'll be able to fill them.
Thank you, Connor. Any other questions tonight? Okay, we have a resolution in front of us.
I was, I was going to move, I was gonna move the resolution and read it into the record.
In the interest of time, do we have to read it?
No.
Okay.
So I move the, I move the resolution on the screen.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second. This is Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda. Any further discussion? Guy, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, I saw a hand. I don't see a hand. Okay, Kyle, could we do a roll call vote?
Yes, starting Grandma Sullivan.
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
That motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Kyle, and thanks, Connor, again for your presentation.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
You too. Number eight on the agenda, review GBOS discussion of HLV draft 2022 annual work program and five-year management plan. The HLV advisory committee work session is on March 24th with a public hearing on April 28th. Would like to speak to this. Mike, go ahead.
I'll speak to it to start off with. We had a, we had a really, I think, hopefully everyone else agrees, we had a very useful work session on this a couple of days ago. We didn't get through the whole document, but we got through, I think, the majority of the document. Discovered today, I don't think I fully understood this, but discovered today that the HLB is looking for written comments by the eighth of April, not the day to the public hearing. I think that's in order to incorporate that, incorporate public comments into the one of their appendices. So we could go ahead and sort of propose something now, although my recommendation would be that we 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 continue with our original intent and gather any further comments from land use and trails next month, at the beginning of next month, and then possibly have one more short work session to finish up our discussion of the document and then provide a resolution after that. We will have time to do that before the public hearing on April the 28th. But it won't make it into the appendix G, I believe it is on the on the document, if we do that. If we do something tonight, it will make it into the appendix.
Thank you, Mike. I did agree that, or I do agree that having extra comments from LUC and Trails before we make our written comments would be helpful, although perhaps they would send their own comments, but it's more, it's more unified to come from GBOS. Any other comments from the board on this? Jennifer?
I just wanted to say that I would agree, but I thought that our work session was really useful, and I would personally be in favor of maybe trying to meet one more time just to get a sense of a general consensus, because we we weren't able to get to that stage.
Thanks, Jennifer. I agree. Guy?
Yep, no, that's what I was gonna request. You know, we didn't get to kind of the individual action items, but we did, you know, speak to them in general, but it might be nice to run through those as a group.
Thanks, Guy. So my concern would be the amount of weeks between now and April 8th, which is the deadline to be in the appendix for written comments. We can still make comments at the public hearing. So having that, finishing our work session meeting and then writing something up soon. Mike?
Yeah, I was wondering whether we should just forego the April 8th deadline and work to the April 28th deadline, and that way we can incorporate anything that comes from land use and which is, I believe, on April the 11th and Trails, which will be on April the 12th. So if we have a work session following that, still gives us a week and a half before the we then have our own meeting the following Monday, the GBOS meeting where we can pass a resolution, and then it still gives a week and a half before the public hearing. So it could be be available to all of the advisory commission members.
Okay, Guy? Do you have another comment? Okay, I don't know if you have it, you're muted still, but that that is fine with me if it's a more thorough response from the board that we forego the the April 8th deadline and and also in case any other meetings change due to the election date, the fifth for any of our Gerdwood Subcommittee meetings. Do we need an official motion on this, or just we'll ask for a work session to be organized?
I guess I can, to try and make it official, let's, I'll move that we postpone the discussion of a resolution until our following meeting on April the, I think it's the 18th.
I think the 18th as well. Thank you, Mike. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second. This is Amanda.
Thanks, Amanda. We could go by a cent on this. Are there any objections?
Not an objection, just a clarification. The the this is on the understanding that we have a work session between now and then.
Correct. Do we all agree that we'll have a work session between now and the public hearing? Any objections to that? Okay. Okay, thank you again, everyone, for attending the work session and participating. Very helpful. Okay. Just hear some audio, but I don't think anyone's saying anything. So we can go to number nine, agenda item LUC 2201-06, Gerdwood Industrial Park Concerns Power and Plating. Kyle, do you have something here?
I have an update. Well, on the power aspect is we are working with Chugash. One of the stipulations at Chugash is that they want to see a base drawing for how we would want power or what the power setup would be in our facility. And so we're working with the potato company to get a proposal from one of their subcontractors who does electrical engineering to see what that would cost to to get that drawing done. Basically, this drawing in the long run would lead us to getting approval from the municipality for our power there and and then how that connects in the Chugash. So so we're going through that step now, and I'm hoping to have a proposal, and I'll bring it before the board at the next meeting there. I have talked with HLB and they are pursuing the idea of selling the large track down there, Track Two. And there'd be a stipulation within that, that a section of land, probably close to two acres, would be conveyed back to the municipality for, one for, the one aspect is the Ditterod Trail runs through there, and the other is for the municipal services, the road service lot there and for the fire department. So there would be a parcel given back, and then we would use that parcel to house, street maintenance, our parks and rec operations, and then the fire department training facility in that aspect. So so we are keeping tabs on that RFP as it as it gets developed and and as it comes out or moves forward, we'll keep the board aware of it, too.
Thank you for your work on this, Kyle. That is encouraging to hear. I'm glad you made progress with HLB as well. Are there questions from the board on this? Go ahead if you don't need to raise your hand. Okay, I don't see any questions, so look forward to that next next update, Kyle. Number 10, agenda item LUC 2201-07, update on assembly redistricting reapportionment of assembly seats. I think that was in the packet. See your map.
All right, I'm trying to tune it in here. This is what was discussed earlier here, and Mike, do you want to speak to this? You tend to have better knowledge on this than I do.
Yeah, sure. I mean, not that I'm agreeing I have better knowledge, but I will speak to it. I haven't actually seen the Constant S2 map. I'd only seen the the Kennedy and Constant Amendment. So basically, there's there's a map which has been labeled MAP 11 version two, which is one of the proposals, and there were two changes, relatively small changes to those under the Kennedy amendment, Kennedy amended version, the Constant amended version. There are, they they have very little impact on our districts, so from a purely selfish, Gerdwood-centric point of view, there really isn't much difference between them. But I think overall, as far as how they tie in with community council boundaries within Anchorage Bowl and school districts of the school catchment areas for the different high schools within Anchorage Bowl, there is a significant difference. I'm probably not, I haven't studied, said I haven't actually seen the Constant S2 version. I went to this a couple of days ago. It's been updated since. But the 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 majority of the changes set around the the east and west high schools and how Spanard and some other community councils are split up. It's possible that, I don't know if John is still on, he may be able to speak to this more intelligently than I can. John Weddleton, I'm not sure if he's still here.
Yeah, I'm still here. I I think you got the gist of it. You know, it's more a little bit of changes in District One. I know Bryce Willbanks is here, too. He could
Oh, yes.
probably speak more on the, probably both of them, but particularly the Kennedy version.
I think Bryce was here. I don't think he's here anymore. Oh, yes, you are. Sorry, my apologies. You're under B, not W.
Yes, the last name. I mean, I'm not sure how much more I can really add to it. Specifically, I've not seen Constant Version Two. I imagine that that is the mix of, so I'm telling members, Zalatell and Rivera have brought forward a new map as well that makes some changes, mostly around the UMed district and East Anchorage District. Kennedy's Amendment keeps most of the lines clean and follows some differing areas. As I helped draft it, it follows some of the school board boundaries that you can kind of see, as well as some of the community council boundaries. None of it has any impact to the Gerdwood area whatsoever. How this one, Kennedy's Amendment, would impact South Anchorage would just be taking a small chunk of the Bayshore Clat area and moving it into District Three, as well as moving some of the Ternigan areas, but most of it has to do with just internal Anchorage Bowl discussions. And that is, yeah, that's all I really have to add to it.
Thank you all. Are there any questions for anyone? Mike, your hand is up.
Not so much a question, more a comment. I mean, I think we, it was, it's valuable to have this on the agenda, but I think our concerns were probably more about the the wider range of original maps, and I personally don't feel that we're in a, we're in a position to make a a clear recommendation or statement on the, on the various maps which are in front of us now. That's my sense. So I won't be proposing anything.
Thanks, Mike. I agree. Anyone else? Comments or questions? All right. Well, thanks, Bryce, and thank you, John, for weighing in on that and the map here. So I think we'll go on to our next agenda item. Number 11, review draft changes to address structure of new-old business meeting requirement and discuss what is needed for petitioners to receive one meeting review. That is in the packet.
Yeah, let me find it real quick.
What's gonna be?
Okay, so this proposed change to your operating procedures helps us address when petitioners are requesting only one meeting instead of the standard two. Typically, they come in and present his new business, and they return a month later or longer, depending on, like, for example, a variance application may take a long time before we see it come back, but they make the initial public presentation. But sometimes we get people who are under a due date that doesn't allow for the two meetings. And so basically, what we're requesting is that this be added, which gives petitioners a set of three questions that they would write out, and then that allows for you to have a better educated idea as to why they're requesting a one meeting and if you approve it. And you would get this in advance of the meeting so that you have a chance to understand it before having to go through and listen to it or try to get the the answers that you're seeking leading up to a decision here. So so it would be this change here under C, issues needing a vote.
Thank you, Kyle. Mike, go ahead.
It's really just a process comment. I think the last meeting, we discussed the language, and we agreed with the general principle of the language, I think, although we didn't vote on it. But how we how we're supposed to go ahead according to our operating procedures is if we're proposing a change, we have to publicize it for thirty days before we actually vote on the change. So I think the discussion now would be, if we're happy with making this as a proposal, it would be advertised and be available to the public for the next thirty days, and then we would actually have a vote on it at the next meeting.
That is correct. Yes.
Thanks, Mike, for pointing that out. That sounds good to me, since we did discuss this language last meeting. Are there any other comments from the board?
I guess it's not entirely clear to me whether we have to make a formal proposal to distribute this as a recommended change and then vote on it next time, or whether we actually have to vote on it now as a proposal, then vote on it again to accept it. I just don't quite understand what we should do. Maybe staff can advise.
Yeah, I would recommend that you guys make up a formal proposal that this change is open for thirty-day review, and then you guys can consider it again at the next meeting.
Okay, I'll make that. I'll move that.
Thanks, Mike. We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I'll second. This is Jennifer.
Thanks, Jennifer. Any discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call vote, please, Kyle.
Sure, starting Brianna.
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Thanks, Kyle. Thanks for bringing that up on the screen here and helping to make our meetings more efficient in the future. our meetings more efficient in the future. Number 12, Discuss and Act on Starting Hybrid Meetings in April. Jennifer, would you like, oh, go ahead, Kyle.
No, go ahead, Jennifer. She'd like to. I can jump in there too from the technical side.
Okay.
Actually, I was gonna, if you went to me, I was gonna throw it right back at Kyle because I understood that the technical, at this point, I thought the technical side is the, the cork.
Thanks.
Sure. And I, I can uh, also address, I'm gonna, excuse me, I'm just gonna scroll up here and it's gonna be a little busy here in front of you, but um, one thing that we've done uh, since the last meeting is that we have put out a survey um, to get input from the public on where they want to do for future meetings. Um, and uh, this is in your packet, so I will quickly roll through it, but if you'd like to look to it, it's online. And um, but basically you can see here the percentage where people attend, what meetings they attend. Uh, the G B O S uh, being the most attended at 70 of the uh, 103 that responded and then 68 uh, for uh, Grew, Grew and Trails Committee, you know, and so people uh, check what they attend there. So they could check, uh, if they attend each one of these, they could uh, check them all. So, uh, but overwhelmingly, we saw that people wanted uh, a hybrid option. Um, uh, actually, the, in most cases, the lowest percentage was to attend in person again. Um, people wanted to have the option to either show up here or uh, do it from wherever they are in the world and attend the meeting. And we've seen that uh, over the last two years. Uh, uh, more people attending these meetings because of the option to be online. Um, so um, and, and the other question that we did ask is what time do people want meetings at? And the most common um, was uh, seven o'clock. Uh, the team that seemed to work for a lot of people, we asked six, six-thirty and seven. Um, and seven, I think works nicely, especially for those who are commuting back from Anchorage after work. At least gives them a bit of time to eat dinner, get settled and, and then get ready for a entertaining meeting. Um, and then we did ask what people uh, wanted for protocols, uh, uh, you know, to make in-person meetings begin again. Um, and, and distance seating uh, was uh, one of the larger options, what we could do physically, uh, we would encourage mass. Um, but really have the materials projected on the screen. Um, and tonight we are in the community room. Um, and we've been running uh, tests on this hybrid system uh, that we're developing and uh, it seems to be working pretty good. So, um, so we, we feel we'll be ready by next uh, uh, G B O S regular meeting in April to run a head hybrid option. So we welcome back any of the G B O S members to come attend and we'll have seats set up. Um, if, if G B O S would like to go with that option. At this point in time, we are still following online only. Um, but I think tonight we'd be looking to G B O S to consider going back to uh, hybrid uh, or to a hybrid option and having uh, um, option for people to attend here if they wanted to, because some people just have a hard time with technology or don't have the resource to it. And um, it's much easier for them to attend in person. So, um, and then uh, there were uh, a, a chance for people to add anything else about future public meetings. And so we had 32 responses there. Um, and we had a lot of people who really liked the virtual option um, in there. And we had some people who wanted to go back to strictly um, uh, in person. Uh, you know, we had people who uh, wanted no COVID restrictions. Um, and, and a variety of things there. So we do uh, welcome you to read all these. Um, there's some great comments in here. Um, and even somebody who wasn't able to finish the uh, um, survey, they sent us an email. So that was nice and we appreciate that. So, so with that, uh, we feel like we're tuning in this system and we look forward to running it. Um, and hopefully can create this hybrid option for everybody. Um, and you know, the biggest challenge I think we'll have with the hybrid option is to uh, uh, do it here in person and for those speaking in the room to be heard online. Um, but we're pretty impressed with this new conference system. Um, it's the same that is running the mayor's office and uh, you know, it comes with a camera and uh, it could even show you the option here. So um, give you a little perspective on where we're at. So turn on the camera and uh, we have a There it is. So you can see me there. We have a, a video camera there. Um, so it's, it's a portable webcam and then like I can flip it and push a button real quick. And then you see Margaret over there.
I don't see you, but maybe that's just me.
Is your, is the video, can you see video at all?
I don't think it's showing, Kyle.
I can see video, I can see video of you as a, as a participant, but it's not on the main screen.
If you disable screen sharing for a second and turn off your screen, that would work.
Yeah, okay. So I'll turn off my, so if you have one screen, sometimes it's hard to see. Uh, so I turned off my screen sharing. Can you see us now?
Can you do the plan? Because that was cool.
Yep, so we'll do that again and you can just do this real quick. So if you have one screen, sometimes it'll just be a little window down the side uh, that shows the video. So.
Oh, thanks.
Yep, there you go. But I'll go back to screen share. So yeah, that's, that's where we stand at this point in time and I'm really looking to the board for the direction if they want to return to um, uh, in-person or a, a hybrid option for the April meeting.
Thanks, Kyle. We have two questions or comments. So Amanda, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I am wondering, um, I saw it said 93 responses, but I, I know that some of those were multiple, you could click multiple things. So I didn't know, how many people is what I'm asking. Uh, do you, do you know how many people actually responded to the survey?
We had 108 unique responses, so 108 individuals who responded to the survey.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Thank you, Kyle. That was all way better than I could have said it. Um, I did just want to encourage anybody's listening that uh, the comments really are worth going through. It was super interesting. And there were several about trying to keep the meetings shorter, which as a member of G B O S, like I noted, and uh, I don't know what we can do about it, but I wanted, because there were several of those comments, I just wanted to put out there that uh, we did notice.
Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, I totally agree and thank you, Kyle. And just to your question also, um, when Amanda asked the numbers each, some people didn't fill in all of the answers. So maybe 93 people or in unique responses answered the first question, but 100 answered the second question or something like that. Um, anyway, Mike has his hand up.
Yeah, a couple of things. First thing is I noticed the same thing about a couple of these, two or three people asked, where a meeting shouldn't last more than two hours. And like, I wish that were the case. Maybe it can be. Um, we have been thinking about whether we can do sort of consent items. So there's, um, there's material that we don't have to discuss. We can just add it on the agenda in the past. Um, and the other thing is I was, I was gonna actually make a motion that we um, we have a hybrid meeting in April.
Thank you, Mike. We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Guy. Any further discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call, if that's all right, Kyle.
Sure. Uh, Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Mike Edgington.
Yes.
Guy Wade.
Yes.
Amanda Sassy.
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard.
Yes.
That motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Kyle, for all your work on the survey and Jennifer and Kaylee were great to work with to put this together. And um, so everyone that wants to read it, that, or just send further comments as this process goes on is really helpful. Anything else here on this item? Okay, that was number 12. 13, Update on G B O S Resolution 2020 dash 11, Resolution Against Racism and Community Forum.
Brianna, I could speak to that.
Okay, thank you, Guy.
Brianna Sullivan, myself, has taken on this task, um, that for a resolution I, I believe was made in 2020. Um, so no action at this time. It is under plate and we, we, we do know the importance of it and um, we've been working with um, other board members who had initially put this resolution forth. I think our, not speaking for you, but something that we're really working on, the led, the resolution states that the board commits to competing in a community forum on this topic. So we're just trying to figure out what that would look like. And um, and needed, how would we fund that? I don't think the board um, right now, uh, we're in a position to put on such a forum. Um, you know, it's a, it's a big topic and I don't think we're um, the group to do it, but there are others out there that could facilitate it. So we are, um, we're looking into that and we um, welcome any public comment. Feel free to reach out to me, um, if you have any suggestions and just want to let you know, we are, we are thinking about it and trying to get a um, a resolution to this resolution. Thanks.
Thank you, Guy, for speaking to that. And I echo everything you said and agree as Guy and I work on this. Any questions on that? I don't see any hands. Uh, number 14, go ahead. I just hear echoing. Okay. 14, Discuss Girdwood Valley Service Area First Quarter Budget Revisions and G V S A Capital Savings Funds.
So I can speak to this. Uh, let me uh, pull it up here and um, as we go through it. Okay, let me shrink this down just a bit. Um, so we uh, the only uh, first quarter revision that we have is the um, police budget for 2022. Um, that's because of the Consumer Price Index increase, uh, which is directly tied to inflation. Uh, through our discussions with Whittier, we've agreed upon a 4.9 CPI increase. I think it's more unfair as we're seeing inflation rates at above seven. Um, and so that would increase and this is, this is within our uh, police services contract with Whittier. Um, the last two years, we have not had an increase because inflation was negative, uh, especially last year. Um, so our uh, contract stayed at the same original price, which was 675. Um, but this year, we do have an increase uh, because of the increase in inflation. Um, and so that would be a thirty-three, three, $33,075 increase. Um, and uh, and so it would take our overall budget up to $724,428. Uh, one thing that did come down, uh, was a slight decrease in our A T Cs was our purchasing services from the purchasing department. Um, you know, last year it was at 394 and this year, the last couple of years, it's been at 394. Um, excuse me, and then it went down to 328. Um, so there was a little decrease there. So, um, so there, there is a, a little offset. Um, so overall, that would be our increase there um, at this point in time. So uh, we have started the process to put this in first quarter revisions. Uh, the one thing that we are missing is the approval from G B O S to accept this revision. Um, and then uh, uh, that will have, uh, show the support from the service area for the change.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions from the board? Just go ahead. Don't see or hear any. Jennifer.
Can I go ahead and move that we accept these provisions?
We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I call second.
Thanks, Mike. Any discussion on this?
I don't think there's any just much discussion to have. I mean, this is a contractual thing we have to do.
Right. Okay. Let's do a roll call, Kyle, just to be consistent.
Sure. Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Uh, Mike Edgington.
Yes.
Guy Wade.
Yes.
Uh, Jennifer Wingard.
Yes.
Amanda Sassy.
Yes.
Uh, that motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Kyle. All right, we're into the next piece of our agenda. Number 15, Under New Business. Consider Agenda Topics For M O A G B O S Quarterly Meeting Scheduled For Monday, April 25th At 4:00 P. M.
Brianna, sorry through the chair, apologize. Uh, we wanted to talk quickly about capital budgets. Uh,
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Mike had a request for that the last meeting, um, to where we stand with our capital budgets at this point in time. Um, so uh, just to quickly take you through it, uh, right now in our undesignated uh, capital fund for the fire department, we have 430,000 available. Uh, keep in mind, you'll see the note here on the side, the 2022 contributions have not been applied yet. Uh, when they do get applied, we'll update these charts, but they are still sitting in the operating funds. And so uh, we usually move them about second or third quarter um, over, uh, sort of just keeping it as a, as a, uh, as a safety, um, in case there's some uh, operational expenses that we aren't seeing. Sometimes we don't move until fourth quarter, just depending on how things are going for the year. So at this point in time, they are still sitting there. Um, in Parks and Rec, uh, right now, uh, you'll see here, uh, we have included in there the, uh, the money for the uh, Winter Creek Suspension Bridge Project, uh, which right now we're in the preliminary stages of, of uh, initial design uh, for that project, but we have 473,000 uh, available for it. Uh, we did spend uh, around 50,000 in the uh, the pre-development uh, where we came into the presentations and we had engineering initially done for the concept. So they basically the concept design. Uh, in our undesignated capital fund right now for the parks, we have 640,000. And then in our uh, money available for the community room here at the, at the library, uh, we have 70,000. Um, the G B O S did approve uh, of the funds to buy the uh, hybrid equipment uh, technology. So we have spent that. And so uh, that originally was 74,000. Um, but those money, those funds have been expended for this here. So, so um, uh, and then scrolling down into Street Maintenance, um, we have 216,000 available there. Um, we had a very expensive year last year with the repave of Alberg and the new guard rails and then also paving of some approaches uh, off of Aliesca View. So that really taxed that fund last year. Um, but once again, we have a contribution coming towards that. So uh, in each of these categories, uh, um, we have somewhere between 75,000 to 125,000 per department going in for contributions this year in '22. So, so those will increase those funds um, in each area. So that's where we stand at this point.
Thank you, Kyle. Sorry that I jumped ahead.
No problem.
Thanks for going over the capital. Uh, Mike has a question or comment?
Yeah, thank you, Kyle. Um, on the fire department capital, it's listed as undesigned it. Now, we did have a kind of discussion of vote, I thought, last year about um, the allocation towards engine 41. Um, is that still, is it truly undesigned it? I thought we'd made an action to um, it, yeah, to pay towards that.
No, we haven't done any action towards designating money for it. We are waiting on a um, uh, a bid there for it.
Okay.
And it's been a lengthy process. One has to do with the supply chain and then two, uh, I know the fire department internally is working this out and we probably will hear from them in the coming months. Uh, there may be a shift in priority on apparatuses. Um, their, their response vehicle, piece of the Suburban that you see, uh, is really starting to have problems and that is probably the most used and the highest mileage uh, uh, vehicle. So uh, they may be shifting towards replacing those first and then holding off on engine 41. Uh, they've been really busy on rescue 41, which is an area-wide fund.
Yeah.
And I think that's really maybe showed their true spirits of like, what's going on out there in the supply chain and how difficult it is with getting these engines replaced. So it's a, it's a focus on trying to really uh, take care of the priorities at this point in time.
Okay, so this is closer to what we did with the bridge. We've had a, we've said we were prepared to spend this money as a principle. We haven't actually allocated it and income.
Yeah, I think we just gave you a warning shot that we were coming, so you guys are prepared for it. So.
And Chief Weston has her hand up. And Chief Weston has her hand up as well.
Oh, yeah, I, I just wanted to agree with what Kyle's saying. The supply chains are very messed up right now for command vehicles and apparatus and actually all the fire equipment. So we're looking at sometimes like a year out for things. So along with that, the command vehicle issue is still raising its head. And then also we'll have to buy turnouts, which we have a grant in for, but we'll have to buy turnouts out of a capital fund before September. So those items are going to be coming up probably next month for, for a still look by the, at the GBOS.
Thank you, Chief Weston.
One thing before we go, and I think this is something that I will work with on the different supervisors for the different departments, is I think we really need to take a strong review of our capital program. We just have large projects that are rising as time goes on. You know, we have infrastructure that was new 10 years ago, but is all sudden 10 years old and getting worn. And we need to talk more about our capital funds for the future because it's, it's something I think the service area is just going to have to tackle. Especially the aspect that we have poor success with bonding and, and trying to take care of our needs. Because we see the struggle trying to raise funds through grants and things like that. We can piecemeal things, but we just can't get large grants like we used to in the past. So, so I think as we head into the next budget year discussions, you'll probably hear from, from me to talk about strategies on how we grow these capital funds quicker so we can tackle problems in shorter times.
Thank you, Kyle. Prudent to discuss. Any other questions on either of these? Thanks, Kyle, again. And now to the agenda topics for MOA GBOS Quarterly Meeting Scheduled for Monday, April 25th at 4 o'clock. I believe this meeting is still, yeah, on that date. So here is the agenda on the screen.
And Brianna, this is the agenda from the last meeting. So we just put on here to, to give a refresher, what was discussed at the last meeting and what we're looking to discuss again. One thing that we are working out with the chairs is that we're looking to shift the meetings for April by one week for almost everybody. Trails Committee has made the decision to shift because their meeting is held on election night. And they have shifted one-week leader. And we think we should do the same with LUC and GBOS. In particular, LUC, because both Margaret and I have family conflicts that have to have us out of town and I'll be traveling that night. So we'll be looking to the chairs to decide that. So with that, if we do shift it back, the, this quarterly meeting and the GBOS will fall on the same day. So we would be looking for, for items from the GBOS tonight. And if you have more over the next month, you can send them to us. We could add them to this agenda.
Okay, thank you, Kyle, for explaining that. Should we take the time right now, then? Are there any other suggestions for the agenda items from the board? Guy?
Yeah. Just going off the old one, you know, let's keep the Girdwood Fire Department on there, obviously, until that contract is finalized. And I do notice they, they shall be the plan review. Might want to add that on there as well. I don't see it specifically on there. If we can speak to it then, or it might be too late, but I just want to talk about.
Thank you, Guy. And then on the fire department, I would add the first quarter revisions if the first quarter still, both topics need to be discussed. Mike?
Yeah, I think the, sorry, item four, we probably already covered. So we might not need that in there. And I think we should have a discussion about ABO.
Got it.
Jennifer?
We don't need two anymore either, do we? Or do we, are we still talking about that with the city?
I would say that I'll, I'll probably have the most updated information for you on that. It can be discussed at the city level, but, or at the municipal manager level. But I will probably have the most up-to-date information on that. So I can provide that at that meeting if you like.
Thanks.
Mike?
Sorry, my hand touched up from last time.
Okay. All right. Anything else? And we could also send, submit these via email before this meeting. Okay. Okay, don't hear anything else. Number 16. Girdwood Service Area Manager Review. Discuss Process. So, Mike, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, I think I can or you can. So Brianna and I, Kyle hasn't had a, hasn't had a performance review from the board for several years. And that is clearly lacking. So Brianna and I have had a couple of discussions about a couple of different ways we can go about this. One is to hold the, we've also looked at a couple of other communities about how they do this with their city manager, which is obviously a similar position. And some do it as a normal, sort of public, part of a public agenda. Sometimes they do it as an executive session. And sometimes the board meets to provide feedback. And then there's a separate meeting between, you know, many cases, the mayor and the municipal manager, which is not even an executive session, but a one-to-one. So they are the three different models, at least we've seen. And we just wanted to get some feedback from the whole board about which way you would like us to go with this. While I have a preference, I will let everyone discuss.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, that was a great introduction for this. And because all of us or none of us were on GBOS, the last time Kyle had a performance review, we're just not clear on the best way forward so that performance reviews can have a consistent plan and goal and purpose and outcome. So, and in the, okay, I'll let anyone else on the board weigh in. So you could just suggest whether you think, like they've done historically, I believe, is the whole board meets and then there is an executive session and then writing more of a letter format, but I wasn't there, so.
And it's okay if the board wants, wants to let Brianna and I go ahead and just make our own decisions and go forwards. They're okay with that, too.
Yes. Thanks, Mike. Yeah, so it's, it's up for discussion tonight at our meeting in a formal setting. So if anyone else has anything to add, feel free. Thanks, Jennifer.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, Brianna. Would it be possible for us to do an executive session as part of the work session on the HLB thing? Can we go into executive session super quick and come back out?
I can partially answer that. I think we're supposed to go into executive session as part of a decision-making meeting, I believe, because we have to make a decision to go into executive session. So it would have to be a special meeting or a regular meeting, I think. But we could schedule something immediately afterwards.
Yeah, I agree with that, Jennifer. You know, either before or after that.
Because the next few weeks and into April are looking kind of busy for meetings, so we may want to find an efficient solution.
Go ahead.
Sorry, are you seeing a solution other than tacking it on to the HLB work session?
What I'm saying is that we, I don't believe we can technically just tack it on to the HLB work session and go straight into an executive session. What I think we can do is if we schedule HLB work session for a period of time, we can schedule a special meeting immediately afterwards and then do the executive session within that special meeting.
Okay, right. That's, that's what I meant. I also like the idea of, you know, the buzzer, like on the American Idol, but I guess that's, we can't do that. So, yeah, let's consider an executive session.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Questions? Not sure. Mike, if there's anything I'm missing.
I think the sense I'm getting is, is the way the board would like to do it is do it through an executive session. And I think we can do that. We just have to go through the process of scheduling it, which we can do offline.
Okay, okay. That sounds organized. All right. Thank you, everyone, for that. And looking forward to it. Okay, number 17. Agenda item LUC 2203-05: Request for GBOS Resolution of Support for Girdwood Housing Plan to be added to the MOA Planning Department budget through first quarter revisions. Christina Hendrickson. Welcome.
I will speak to this. We received an email from Christina this week, this evening during the meeting. And she said, I'll just read the email into the record, so it's there. Margaret and Kyle, I will be absent from tonight's meeting and unable to present on the new business topic of the housing plan. The content of my presentation speaks for itself as covered in last week's Land Use Committee meeting. There's, there is no requirement for me to present the material I provided and included in tonight's packet. As there is no specific action and merely a recommendation, I will reengage in next month's old business at Land Use Committee and GBOS meeting. I will review tonight's meeting notes for valued, added community input. And should there be any questions, please let the committee members know. I will remain available for the three weeks until our LUC meeting. So that was an email from Christina Hendrickson.
Okay, thanks, Kyle, for reading that. If anyone listened to the presentation at Land Use or has already looked in the packet, do you have any comments from the board first? Go ahead, Mike.
The timing question, I think. The first course to budget revisions have to be submitted sometime before the assembly meeting where they voted on that. Assembly meeting is at the end of April, early May. So I don't know what this deadline is for us to make a formal request of when that would have to be to get into the, you know, the municipal process. I'm wondering if, if we're, since we're talking about moving our meetings back by a week, we may well hit up against that deadline.
Thank you for that point. Okay. Noted that. Guy?
Yeah, I had to get offline before her presentation. I didn't read through this. Just for clarification for me, that was new business during the Land Use Committee and it needs to go back for them to take a vote on it. Is that correct? And then it'll come to us as old business?
Yes, yes. That's how, you got it. Mike, is your hand still up for?
It wasn't meant to be, but I do have a, I do have a question. I just wonder if Kyle, if Kyle can speak to the issue about timing of if we, when do we need to make a, when would we need to do something to get it into first quarter budget revision? And if it doesn't work through the municipal process, I guess there's still the option of doing it through assembly members.
That's probably the process they would have to go through. And it would have to probably come through the planning department making the request. As GBOS does not have the advisory powers for planning department. But this would be more of a, I guess, a more of a resolution to be sent to the planning, to the planning department to make the request to increase the first quarter revision to fund this plan or to take care of this plan. So from a department aspect, our deadline was basically last month to submit those budgets so that OMB could organize them and then present them to the administration to start reviewing them. And as stated early in the meeting, that process is going on right now, reviewing those first quarter revisions. So they can get prepared to deliver it to the assembly. And then usually the first meeting after the election is certified, they vote on the first quarter revisions and set the budget for the year. So that's usually the normal case. So if something was to come, and I, and then right now I don't have that meeting in front of me and I would have to go and look at when things are typically certified. Most likely it would have to be laid on the table and presented by an assembly member to have this funding included for this plan.
Okay, that answered the question. So it wouldn't be done through department. It would be done through assembly.
Correct.
Assembly member action. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you both for that. Any questions from the public? Or on the phone? Okay, I do not see any. And everything there is in the packet. Like she said, it speaks for itself. Looking back at this. So next on our agenda are reports, which are in the packet. There's a great report from the library at the very bottom and info from Parks and Rec and all of that. Okay. Anything else, Kyle?
Nothing on our end.
Okay. All right, I think I'll entertain a motion to adjourn before 10 o'clock.
To adjourn?
In a second.
Congratulations on getting it done so quick, Brianna.
It took everyone.
We're still not two hours.
So we're missing a second. Did somebody give us a second? Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. All right, thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Thanks, Kyle.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.